Sorry to interrupt the conversation. Looks like everybody's visiting nicely. Good evening. Today is Monday, August 26, 2024, and the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting of the Prosperity Board of Trustees is hereby called to order according to Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Representing the quorum this evening, we have Mr. Webb, Mr. Dial, Mrs. Dixon, I'm Bill Beavers, Mr. Cavender, Mr. Linker, and Mr. Van Wolf. The Board of Trustees extends its heartfelt gratitude to our entire Prosper ISD community. We're deeply appreciative of our residents who approved a $2.7 billion bond for new schools in construction, our dedicated teachers and staff who tirelessly serve our students and families, our parents who support our teachers and campuses through volunteering and partnering with us in their child's education, our exceptional campus and district leaders who we believe are the finest in Texas and continuously strive for excellence. Your collective commitment to Prosper ISD is what makes our district thrive. Thank you for choosing and supporting our schools. Mr. Linker, you have the invocation for us this evening.
Yes, let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day. Thank you for the blessing for us to be together tonight. Thank you for a great start to our school year. But Lord, even with all the blessings in our community, we know that there's families that are struggling with health issues, tragedies, and we just ask that you keep your hand upon them, help guide them through these tough days. And as always, we pray for healing for these families. Lord, above all, we ask your protection over our students and staff as we go through the rest of the school year. For tonight, we ask for wisdom and discernment for our board. We love you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas pledge.
On honor to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Dial, you have the board's vision this evening.
Yes, sir. The board's vision is to ensure a safe and supportive educational environment that promotes academic excellence and opportunities, honors traditions, fosters student learning, facilitates effective recruitment and retention of talented educators, and grows all people at all levels.
Perfect. Thank you, sir. As always, this meeting is being conducted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Acts, which can be found in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. All of our voting must be in public, but we can privately discuss certain items, including but not limited to matters regarding individual employees, individual students, land acquisitions and real estate, school safety and security, and matters requiring legal advice. However, after that private discussion, any final vote must be in complete view of the public. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the agenda for tonight's meeting was posted for the public to view at least 72 hours before the meeting. Okay, we will now have dates coming up in front of y'all. Kids, good job. Y'all have got a holiday coming up this next week, so enjoy the downtime. And that will take us right into celebrations.
Yes, sir. So we have some pretty exciting news because our Rogers Yearbook staff, they've been selected for Johnston's National Book Bundle. And so this is a very hot honor because the book actually travels out to all these different schools and it chooses a model and example on how to make the rest of the possible. So this is our Rogers Middle School Yearbook Eagle Edition has been selected for excellence and feature in the Johnston's Book Bundle. Eagle Edition was one of only 14 yearbooks selected from thousands across the country. The Johnston's Book Bundle is an annual collection of outstanding yearbooks, selected for their creative themes, cool colors, beautiful designs, relevant coverage of school events, meaningful storytelling, and stunning photography. Tonight, we recognize the Roger Yearbook team under the leadership of their teacher, Kellyton Harzen, and of course their principal, Jason Jettan. I'm going to have Presley Bell, if you will come up. Mackenzie, if you'll come forward. Yasmin. Chloe. Hayden. Phoebe. Raylan. Kinsley. Hayden. Carson. Evan. Hannah. Izzy. Reese. Close, my goodness. Molly. Scarlett and Kay. They're studying, I guess, or maybe taking pictures of Rogers event. Mr. Harzen, Jason Jettan, if you'll please also come up. We certainly want to recognize you for your fine honor. I will say that I have your yearbook displayed in my office, right by my desk, and I put it prominently on the stand so that I could look at it. So very, very proud of you. I know that this is a huge honor. Just from past years working with Johnston, the amount of yearbooks and school districts that they work with, it's a ton. And for them to choose your book out of only 14 that were selected is a really hot honor and we're so very proud of Prosper ISD names and Rogers Middle School response. So congratulations to you all. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Great job.
Mr. Harzen, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I think you covered it. They're amazing and having come back from high school to celebrate their middle yearbook.
Yeah. I love to tell this story and I probably, I think I told it to every single new employee that has joined us this year, which is upwards of 740. So our Prosper High School girls soccer team on the state's state championship this past spring. And not only did they get to come home with a gold medal, but we have Coach Pat Dickinson, who will come out. Coach Dickinson is this year's Texas Girls Coaches Association Soccer Coach of the Year. Here's what athletic director Jeff Smith had to say about Coach Dickinson being selected for this honor. This coach is having an exceptional first year as the head coach for our program. Despite battling through a season that saw his team lose multiple starters during district play and building a squad that relied on as many freshmen players as it did seniors, he turned it into one of the most memorable and historical seasons on this campus. State championship seasons do not happen by accident. The continual improvement of his squad speaks volumes to the job he and his staff did this season. Obviously, the success that he has had this year becoming the first 6A state champion in PISD athletics and bringing PHS, its very first soccer state championship, not be overstated. But Coach Dickinson is more than the results that he has in front of him. If you've ever seen him coach on the field and being able to watch him, the camaraderie that he has with the girls, but not only with the girls, but also their parents, it's a pretty special sight to see. And so as you go through the gauntlet of North Texas to get through the soccer tournament at 6A, you know you're going to run into Houston, Austin area teams, and North Texas is going to come and collide too. But trying to get through that, it takes a very level man, a coach who has a lot of discernment, and doesn't overreact to things, keeps the girls calm, the parents calm, and gets us where we need to be. And so I want to say congratulations, Coach Dickinson. You're the model of exactly what we want to see on the field, both on and off. So thank you very much for your leadership.
Well done. Great job.
Next up, we have another very calm person in our district, and that is our Chrissy Elementary Principal, Dean McDonald Wilson. If you'll come up with your family. So I heard you started kindergarten this year. Is that true? How's it going? Good.
Lunch. Mine too.
Well, thank you, Dean, for being here. Certainly, this, whenever an administrator takes on that head role as a principal, it is certainly a family commitment at a very high level. And I will tell you that Ms. Wilson has had quite a few challenges. As Christie, she's taken over, but every time that I'm out there, she's smiling and she's laughing and trying to make the absolute best of everything that is going on and ensuring that our kids have the best day possible along with our staff. So I want to thank you for that and congratulations. Ms. Wilson has served in education for 16 years in grades pre-K through 8 as a teacher and instructional coach. She came to Prosper ISD in 2022 as an assistant principal at Rushing Middle School. And then this summer, I was like, hey, come by my office. We need to have an interview. And so I was like, okay, so Christie, are you ready? We're really excited to have her leadership. She did an outstanding job at Rushing. And really, Dr. Rowe continued to kind of say, hey, this is the person. This is the person. And so we knew that it was the perfect fit. So congratulations to you and thank you so much for the countless hours you've already given to the district. We appreciate it. All right, Texas Education Association District Distinction Award for Prosper ISD. So we are a district distinction, and that means that we've been recognized for exhibiting outstanding leadership and promoting the arts in our district and community. For the fifth consecutive year, Prosper ISD has met the criteria of comprehensive 14-point degree. Over 1,200 districts were eligible to apply. 94 districts met the highest standard for District of Distinction, placing Prosper ISD in the top 5% in art education of districts in the state. Prosper ISD is one of only 13 school districts in the state of Texas to receive this honor for five consecutive years. I think I have Mr. Allstrom and Mr. Doyle with me. Do I have any art teachers with me too? Oh, I do. Come on up.
Just a few.
Sorry, I can see with my glasses really close to paper, but then you get really fuzzy when I look at it, so. Certainly, I've said this before, but visual arts and performing arts, there's two different types of arts. And the performing arts gets to stay. They get to do theater, choir, all of the things that we can go and sit and watch. But the one thing that we don't get to see always is the visual arts, and so that's the behind the scenes. If you get a chance to see any of our artwork in our buildings, and soon our Performing Arts Center will be able to have it prominently displayed, I encourage you to take that little stroll down the art hallway. It is outstanding what our students are capable of doing, and they're only capable of doing that because they have very highly skilled educators who are guiding them. You can walk into any art classroom, and there's about three or four different levels of art classes going on in the classroom. And these amazing teachers are meeting their needs on all of the different levels that are in front of them. So congratulations to you all. It's a very well-deserved honor and certainly is Prosper ISD. We are so excited for the fifth consecutive year to have this honor. And I know that it's because of each of you and your commitment to art education for students. So congratulations.
Way to go.
And I think that's it for celebrations. Pretty great ones to celebrate.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, we are now, we're about to go into our budget and tax rate meeting, but I want to give a quick intermission in case students, y'all are more than welcome to stay and learn about taxes and all the fun that that is. But hey, if anybody would like to go, we completely understand. So we'll give y'all just a minute or two to leave. Well, thank you for everyone who stayed for the tax meeting now. We are at 6A. I now open the public hearing of the 2024-2025 proposed budget and tax rate. Ms. Sees, do you have a presentation for us?
I do, sir.
Perfect.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Ferguson, Mr. Beavers, members of the board. Tonight, we will conduct the public hearing to discuss the 24-25 proposed budget and tax rate. As always, this is a district-wide effort, and I want to thank everyone that was involved. Special thanks to HR and technology. There's a lot, a lot that goes into it. The topics that we'll go through tonight quickly, because I know you've seen a lot of this, we're going to ask that you set the tax rate. We're going to talk about some of the adjustments since July, looking at revenues, expenses, functional comparison from last year to this year, and we're going to take a final look at the food service and the debt service budget. The next slide you've seen several times. It's just a visual that TEA has that explains the funding. We're formula-funded. We're funded by the basic allotment and all the programs that go with that that are weighted. If we fill the bucket up with taxes, then the state gives us nothing. If we don't fill the bucket up, they give us a little bit, and if we overflow, we have to send it back. It's called excess local revenue or recapture. This is just another visual of the same idea. As the local share goes up, the state share goes down. And this is the slide with the tax rate. As you can see, we did not change it from July. We had an idea of what it would be, but we do have to wait for the MCR to come from the state. They give it to us. We don't calculate it. It's through a state formula. The debt rate did remain constant. And you can see that it went down very, very minimally, but it did go down. I just wanted to explain this because this is the no new revenue thing that's very confusing. The language in the motion that you will use to adopt the tax rate is provided to us by the Tax Office through state legislation as part of truth and taxation. We are required by statute to calculate and include in the motion to adopt the percentage difference in the no new revenue and the proposed tax rate. The problem with this for school districts is adopting at the no new revenue rate, which would result in a significant loss of total combined state and local revenue. The no new revenue rate only takes into account the local side of the taxes of the district revenue, and it does not acknowledge state aid or recapture. So to summarize all that, the no new revenue tax rate that was calculated by the Tax Office and verified by us in your packet is 1.158570. The 8.33% increase is the difference in that no new revenue and the proposed rate of the 1.2552. So that kind of explains the motion that you have. And these are some revenue highlights. We're still anticipating growth of around 2,500 students in average daily attendance. It's based on 29,992 ADA. We're right about there right now, but we know this fluctuates this time of year especially. We'll make a budget adjustment if needed in October after the first six weeks, but prior to snapshot, and that's just the first data collection for TEA. We do receive the fast growth allotment. It's not guaranteed, but you will see that we're receiving 32.3 million. It's increased from last year by 4 million, but if it wasn't prorated, we'd receive 41 million. Just a fun fact, we grew 14,119 kids in the past six years, so this explains why we're getting such a large amount. It's based... 14,119 kids in six years. So it is a formula that they calculate this off of, and it's prorated. And it, like I said, it's not guaranteed, but it helps a lot. And then investment revenue, Ms. Crowe's been working really closely with Hilltop, so we're trying to be a little more active with that, but we're also trying to make sure we're remaining liquid for district needs. And this is the revenue totals for the current projections. This changed a little from July. The increase went from 48.9 to 51 million in revenue. It's mainly since we received the certified values. The whole freeze and all that with the taxes, the certified values came in, which adjusted that because they're giving us, they're essentially holding harmless on that frozen, which they didn't plan to do in the MNO. And so when the taxes came in, they came in a little less, so we had to switch between local and state. As we move through the slides, we'll be comparing the original budget of the 23-24 to 24-25 so that you can kind of get apples to apples. But remember that the original budget here does not include the 10 million that we added in October for the increase in kids last year. And just remember, local miscellaneous revenue is primarily interest. It also includes things like athletic revenue, facility revenue, and just any miscellaneous revenue. I want to point out that the 155 million of the state revenue that you see in the proposed column, about 17 million of that is related to TRS that has a matching expenditure, and that has to do with our employees' retirement. And it's just an accounting entry that we have to do, so it's flow-through. On the federal revenue, we're very conservative on that because we have some programs that technology and Dr. Hickey's group work with, E-Rate, and then charge for Medicaid. But the timing of those things is so hard to predict, that we are pretty conservative on that. This does not include our federal grants, but it does include indirect costs from our federal grants, so we get to pay ourselves back for some things. And as I said before, the local revenue, we've just tried to really start working on some investment possibilities with Hilltop. So this is just a revenue by source slide that just kind of shows you the local taxes and the state taxes are primarily our revenue source. You've seen this before as well. We've added approximately 565 new positions since 23-24 budget adoption. That's about $46 million with new employees, staff raises, benefit contributions. We have some additional hourly staffing needs, and then, of course, we made the first-year teacher at 60,000, so that was great. The average cost of a new employee is approximately $77,000, and that includes 12,500 in associated costs. We've worked really hard with HR to continue to refine these staffing ratios and Skyward Staff Planning module. The highlights of the new expenses that are non-personnel is just inflation, inflation, inflation. It's hitting all areas in growth due to opening new campuses, but there's so many things that you don't think about, like the programs that are going into all these campuses. Some of the really heavy, the big-ticket items are the custodial contracts, utilities, landscaping. Property insurance has been big, and then the appraisal districts charge us a percentage of their budget. We have recapture on here. At the time, it was around a million. It's looking like that's going to be around 800,000, so we should see some savings there. The general fund budget increases split by payroll and non-payroll. So the original budget is for 23-24 is 306, 306 million. And then we're proposing increases and requests of 56.7 for a 362.7 proposed 24-25 budget. And remember, this includes everything we just talked about. And I would just like to really highlight the focus on the payroll piece and the refining the staffing ratios. That's been a big effort for a couple of departments. We have the fund balance impact for 24-25. This has changed. It's down to 15.4. And that's just, I have a great group of people who are combing through this and trying to, you know, find everything that we can possibly find. We also did get the extra revenue from the taxes and the recalculation of that, so that did help. And we also have some safeguards built in to manage the deficit. But this, but remember, this includes filling every position and spending every dollar that we have. We're just trying to be conservative on that. For the 23-24, we're anticipating adding 12 million plus, and we do feel like we will add that. And along the same lines, the tax happened last year, the freeze thing happened last year, and it happened this year. So affected us both years with the actual certified values. I'd just like to add, during this time, we're projecting the best of our ability. We still have August, and we also have the annual audit to go. We have like emergency items that come up. We have items that were encumbered, but they couldn't get here in time. And so the receiving dates and all that's really important this time of year. And it just depends on which year it has to get booked in, depending on when it's received. We, after we reviewed the fund balance, administration is recommending fund balance designations of 2.5 million for the local construction fund and 1 million for the risk management, or it was called the property fund. We renamed it to more appropriately account for the potential benefits of a risk management fund. The local property allows us to handle construction projects that come up that are outside of the bond authorizations. And the risk management fund allows us to increase that internal service fund to proactively ensure that we continue to have the option of competitive pricing and that we cover and coverage options while we're still promoting risk management as a whole through the district. We did add to this last year as well. So if the designations and transfers are approved, the 3.5 would come out of the general fund and go to those designated funds. It would leave approximately 8.5 in the general fund. But when you transfer these out, you still have the option. You can still bring them back. But it's just a good idea for us. It helps us with tracking. It helps us to move those local construction projects out of general fund because it kind of skews the percentages and things like that. So it's just helpful for the tracking of it. The general fund expenditure budget is broken down here by functions. We've grouped these by functional categories. That's kind of what I call them. These are all related to instructional costs. You can see that a large majority of it is straight instruction. And like we talked about the other day, you can kind of connect instruction to everything in the school district, but TEA does make us code it, these different functions, and they want us to approve it that way. So that's how this is kind of broken up. The bulk of this is just staffing, software supplies, growth, everything we've talked about previously. The next slide is instructional-related costs. So to me, they're just kind of supports for the instructional costs. One of the ones that you'll notice is guidance and counseling is a pretty high percentage there. We just added several positions through middle schools and elementary schools that increased that functional percentage itself.
Just to clarify on that, we made those moves so that our counselors would have more time to work with groups of students and small groups so that some of that clerical work would go more to a different leader, correct?
Yes. So the next one is operational costs, which we know we have to have to function. Maintenance and operations is a large amount of the difference. But you'll also notice the security is the bigger percentage. Maintenance, I'll go back to that for a second. That's just, you know, that has a lot of the big-ticket items, custodial, grounds crews, property insurance, utilities. But security, we've added four police officers too for the Richland opening. We've moved crossing guards from Function 34 where it was to this more appropriate function. We receive a minimal amount from the state for this, but we always talk about this. We allocate, you can see, over $4 million. So this has been a priority for us historically. We've invested significantly above the state since 2019, I believe, one officer on each campus since then. Presently, the high schools have two officers and two security officers on each campus. So that's pretty impressive, and we didn't have to scramble when other places were having to scramble for that. Technology is Function 53, and that's devices, subscription, software, personnel, and everything that goes with that. So this other cost is just... Debt service is in there, but it's not our debt service fund. It's related to right-to-use assets, and we have to book it a certain way. It's subscription-based and informational technology arrangements, and it is an accounting requirement. Function 81 in this group is where we could pay for some of these projects out of the general fund. But if we move, if we do these designations, we won't really utilize this too much. It could be used for just portables or moving portables or something like that. And then there's other, the 9s are other fiscal agents, so that's... Um and then there's other, the nines are other phys- other fiscal agents, so that's like ninety-one is where we have to look recapture. Um and then we have like a Plano Regional Day School, which is Dr. Hickey's group. Um the appraisal districts are in ninety-nine, so that's why that one's pretty big as well. These are um the functional category groups and I like to show this because I think this shows that even though we've grown and we've had to move move and change uh positions and things like that uh to more appropriately code them. You can see that we've been very consistent in how um these functions have been allocated, how the funding has been out been allocated to these. And you can also see that there's less than twenty percent that's not not tied to instruction in some way, so that's impressive. And then this is just a really busy slide that just shows how much stuff's going on, I think. But the main thing is the instruction is at sixty-one point four percent. And then, like we mentioned earlier, the next highest one would be the maintenance and operations. Just shows we have a lot going on. Um the next slide is uh expenditure by major object. Um like we said, the function tells us why and the major object tells us what. So um these are broken up by like, for example, um sixty-one hundred is salaries and and these all have different codes related to that. Uh but this is the main thing here is that salaries are at eighty-one point one percent. And you can see of the three hundred and sixty-two point seven million-dollar budget, um two hundred and ninety-four million are related to salaries. The next one is student nutrition. Um we're budgeting fourteen million in revenue and thirteen point four in expenditures. Uh this is a conservative estimate based on uh enrollment and growth and information from this last year. Um we do anticipate twenty-three, twenty-four ending positively. Um we did receive some supply assistance management grants that have been coming for the last couple of years. We don't expect that to continue. Um it does appear that meals were down a little bit this last year, but we're still going to end up with a positive impact. Um it looked like like à la carte and things like that might have been down, so we're checking into some of that. And we'll continue to monitor this throughout the year and if we need to make any adjustments, we will. Um as we move to the last, the these last couple of funds, I did want to remind people that um a question came up the other day about can you move from food service to general fund if you want to pay teachers more or something like that? And you can't do that. You have to keep them within their own funds and the debt service fund as well. Um but the food service fund is supposed to support itself, so that's the idea. We can't have too much fund balance. If we do, we start putting it back into the fund, so. The debt service, we have a hundred and twenty-one point two million dollars in revenue and a hundred and seventeen million in expenses. This is primarily taxes and interest revenue and then that additional state aid for uh homestead exemption and the over sixty-five freeze adjustment. Um the expenses are primarily the bond payments and the associated fees. Um an additional sale would affect the expenses depending on what the sale is and this did happen to us this last year. That's why you saw those weird accounting entries that we had to make. Um as addressed previously, um the homestead exemption and the freeze did play a part of this, but everything looks good and it looks like we have a healthy fund balance at this point, approximately nineteen to twenty million dollars in this fund. So this is just a look of the proposed budget. Um this is in your packets and it's really a one-pager in your packet. We split it up just for visual purposes. Um well, this has been posted on the website since it went into the paper. Uh we have to leave it there and then once it's adopted, we change it to adopted, but we have to leave the proposed and adopted out there for the whole year. This one is just the other side of it. It's the functional comparison. Um and this is the piece that we do have to adopt. And I think that concludes everything. Um is there any questions I can ask? I can answer? Sorry.
Questions from anyone? So we will now have a moment to discuss uh up here, so. Uh while Ms. Sees is still here, any questions while she's up here? No, we'll talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh and to your team and all of our supports around that, whether it's technology or HR. I know that this is an extremely heavy lift and a lot of just countless hours. You make it look easy because you have all these great numbers on slides, but we know how many countless hours go in behind the scenes to even get to this point. And it takes many, many days and months to get here, so thank you to everyone involved.
Thank you. Have a great team.
Okay, that will allow us to have a quick discussion on this. Um a couple of points that I just want to hit on um very quickly uh as we do have a fifteen-million-dollar deficit essentially, round numbers. We did give teachers a raise this past year, which I think um is absolutely the right call uh to do. We could have either had a deficit budget this year or we could have possibly been balanced and be looking for, what, two to three hundred teachers to start the year? Um I think this is the right call um on that. Um is there, that's the, I believe, the biggest part of this is people are going to look at it, so that's why we are, we have this deficit budget. Dr. Ferguson, um I know you and I have discussed, there are a lot of other districts around here as well that are in the same boat. What is roughly the number there?
So there's eighty-eight school districts in Region Ten, which is the service center for our area. So of those eighty-eight, seventeen, only seventeen of them have a balanced budget. Um so I I do want to reinforce to uh what you just said, Mr. Reivers, about the decision that you all made as a board to give the teachers a raise. I know that many people could look at that and go, you were making decisions on adults and you were. But ultimately, what you were making a decision on was what is in the best interest of these students that we're serving and who are those high-quality teachers and pay does matter, right? When a teacher is coming to do the job, certainly we want them to have the heart and really be invested for the difference that they're going to make. Um but we also know that they will make those shifts when the money is where it needs to be or it's comparable to our peer districts. So I want to applaud you for making an excellent decision for our kids, even though it came at an expense for you.
Um one other thing to highlight here is uh we are going into a legislative session this year. Um I uh just last Friday, I visited with um two of our incumbent state representatives, um Mr. Patterson and Mr. Shaheen. Um first of all, I want to say thank you to them. Um anytime I reach out to them, they are quick to get on the phone, have a discussion. Um but one of the things that we did talk about was the need to help public ed this next year. That is something that they both um agreed on. Look forward to the conversation to come, but I wanted them to know, hey, we were proposing a deficit budget this year and why. So it was a good conversation uh with those gentlemen and now knowing, hey, we're going to do this tonight. And then um we will be pushing to help uh the state understand all the good reasons why we need to put more money into uh public ed this year. That's twenty-something billion dollars that I think that the state has in excess funds right now. And uh um we've got some places for them to spend that. Anything else?
Yeah, I might just add, uh again, reiterate the, I know in July, we were presented a kind of a first look and I know there's a lot of work that went into reducing that deficit um in ways. So just a thank you to staff for working on that to, you know, get it to a number that I think we as a board can look around and say, yeah, even with all the changes, this feels a little better. Um so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um okay, that uh.
Can I add something to?
Absolutely.
Um so kind of just to piggyback on what uh Mr. Dial said. When we first were presented with the budget, we were at about a twenty-million-dollar projected deficit. And through the work that everybody's done, it's down to about fifteen and probably be will be less if we don't fill all of the positions. But I'm really proud of our board and administration for stepping up when the state could have and didn't. Um not to sound snarky, but to be probably the only industry that is expected to operate on revenue from what we had in twenty-nineteen, when we know the cost of every single thing has gone up since twenty-twenty. Um and we still gave the biggest raise we we have given to teachers to send a message that this is where we want. We want the best educators for our kids, so um I'm really proud of us for doing that and uh just want to thank Ms. Sees, Dr. Penn and and everybody on the team.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, uh we did not have anyone sign up for public comments. We will um, I will now close the public hearing. We will vote on this in just a moment in uh item ten, um but we will now close the public hearing and return to our regular board meeting. Is that for, that's later on. That's, this is for the tax part of the meeting. Um, okay. Well, let's see here. That takes us to um number seven, which uh is public uh um agenda-related items. Later on, we have non-agenda-related items. So that will then take us into number eight, informational reports.
Yes, uh so just want to give kind of an overview of all the things that we have been able to do um for the start of school. Uh hats off to an amazing team all the way across the board. Everyone really pulling forward, principals at the campuses, teachers and staff, paraprofessionals, bus drivers, custodians, everybody doing their part. Um so we had two new schools open this year, so we had Jackson Elementary and then we also had Jones Middle School. Both phenomenal starts for both of those campuses and Mr. DeVito and Ms. Allen have done an outstanding job of getting those campuses open and people excited about being on the campuses. I don't know how you couldn't be excited about being on the campus because they're beautiful. And then our transportation, so um our bus ridership, you can see on our general education students, uh almost eighty-six hundred students and then our special education registered riders at four hundred and six. You can see the number of bus stops that we have for both general education at one thousand five hundred thirty-six and six hundred and eighteen bus stops for special education. So that's a lot of stops that are happening across uh five different municipalities and two counties as we're picking up our students to get them to school to be educated. And then the number of miles collectively driven in a day is eight thousand eighty-eight miles. And so that is a ton of moving parts and I'm always just amazed that students get home. Um right, especially that first day of school, as you're thinking about, you have three, four, five-year-olds. And for everybody to get home safely, I will say it was kind of fun being out on campuses because I would hear teachers even in the classroom saying what we were saying as leaders of you have three things you've got to do today. You've got to get to school, you've got to eat lunch and you've got to get home, right? And they just kept saying the same thing over and over, but it truly took all of us pulling in the same direction um to ensure that that happened. So very proud of our transportation. And then we've added some new software, so it's Stop Finder. And so this is a support for our parents to be able to see um where are their students and how close are they to the stop? And so this has been well-received. We appreciate all the parents that have reached out if they've had any technical difficulty on how we can best support them and help that them with that. And um you can see that we have a quite a few subscribers at seven thousand three hundred and fifty-seven, almost the number of bus riders that we have. So just a few off from that. And then Aptogee, one of the the things we started, gosh, probably over a year ago, um if not more, and really tasked our communications team, so Ms. Trotter and her team did a great job of how would we overhaul the website, but also make kind of a one-stop shop. In a world where social media tends to kind of rule the day, how could a parent go and find what's going on at Jackson Elementary or at Prosper High School? And so she and her team worked diligently to make sure that there was this one-stop shop where you could go in, you could see dates that were coming up, but also be able to see pictures and activities that were happening on each of the campuses. Um and then that feeding also our website, so really want to give Ms. Trotter and her team a round of applause for that because it's been very well-received by our community, a lot of compliments by staff and by our parents on just the ease of the website and how clean it is to use. So we appreciate that. And then crossing guards, one of the things that we have faced, and here's a couple of pictures of Mr. Buckles and Mr. Mouton over at Rock Hill High School. Um when you look at crossing guards, it's a hard position to fill because you're working either a couple hours in the morning or a cap- couple hours in the afternoon to cross students and then you're also dealing with the weather, the elements that are out there. And so a lot of times what we'd find is that we would have an opening in one of the areas and so that meant that our own staff members had to be pulled out of positions. And when you think about an assistant principal or principal, just the pictures that I've shown you and they're in a crosswalk, if something's happening in the building or it needs their attention as the administrators, they can't le- leave that post and go to it, um whatever that situation is. And so that production and efficiency really starts kind of waning. So um what we did to get started uh the year was five police officers or people from the police department went out and worked because we were ten short and then transportation said, hey, we'll do five um to get us through until we could get this company on-boarded. So we're excited to have them on-boarded. All of our current crossing guards will move over to this new system um and this new company and they'll get paid a little bit more money, which is also a bonus um and great recruiting tool for them. So we're excited to have this third-party vendor with us, All City Management Services. Okay, and then student enrollment. I'm glad to jump into that as well. So you can see, we continue to have high enrollment um and an add of three thousand three hundred and four students. For this time of year, our total enrollment at thirty-one thousand two hundred and forty-one and last year at this time, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven students. And you can see our breakdown from elementary, middle and high and then um of course, our early childhood school. Okay, and then for our bond projects from the twenty-nineteen bond as well as the twenty-twenty-three bond that our voters approved in November of twenty-three. So a little bit of renovations and obviously a lot of new builds and we have multiple projects trying to keep pace with our very ever-growing district. Then we have our maintenance building. Uh Crossland Construction is overseeing this project, so wanted to just provide you a couple aerial shots and pictures so you could see how the progress was coming along with our maintenance facility. And then our um ag facility will also, right there, yep.
One other thing on that, Dr. Ferguson, you had mentioned uh kids reading the school here in the first part of it. We want to thank um uh our Prosper ISD Police Department for all the work that they put in. Um thank you very much, Chief and Assistant Chief. Um seriously, just keeping the kids safe, getting them uh to and from school out there on the roadwork. I know that um Prosper PD was also heavily involved with y'all as well as Frisco PD. And uh please pass along our thanks to them as well for all the work that they've done to start out the year.
We'll also thank Salina.
And Salina, exactly. And Salina, exactly. Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry, yes, Salina, Mayor Tubbs, I'm so sorry. I dare please know that we very much appreciate your guys as well. That's right. Okay, that will take us to consent agenda that is in your packet. Any questions or discussion on that? Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Anything else from anyone? All right, we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor. Any opposed? I will abstain from this one for a business-related reason, but that vote passes six to oh. And then that takes us to number 10, action items. First one, consideration and possible action regarding the 2024-2025 Prosper ISD annual budget. Obviously, we heard a presentation on that just now, have had comments on that already. So at this point, I will ask for a motion, and then a second, then we can have more discussion if we need to on there.
I'll make a motion. I move that the board approve the 2024-2025 Prosper ISD annual budget as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Any discussion on this?
I just want to add one thing to the earlier comments. I want to commend not just, not just the business team, but also the administration as well for giving us these options to look at to take care of our people. It's interesting, we sit here and we look at these incredible buildings throughout Prosper ISD, but without the people that fill them, including the folks in this room, doesn't mean a whole lot. And so that, and also talking about the reinforcement of security, you look at what the state gives us, not just the funding you talked about that hasn't evolved in five years, look at also the safety dollars that are provided to us. We go above and beyond and continually have, and I'm very proud of that, that taking care of our people, and of course, the security and safety of our buildings and our people. So I just want to reinforce that, and again, thanks to everyone that made this possible. Obviously, a deficit budget is not ideal for anybody to approve, but I feel confident it's the right move for our people and for the future of Prosper ISD, so.
We'll keep working on it, too.
Yes, I have no doubt.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Okay, all in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed. That will take us to 10B, consideration and possible action regarding the maintenance and operation tax rate and interest and sinking tax rate for 2024-2025 school year. May I have a motion on this?
I've got this one. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of one point two-five-five-two-zero-zero, which is effectively an eight-point-three-three percent increase in the tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Linker, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. We'll open this up to discussion as well, and I want to remind everybody, just with what Ms. Sees said earlier, the language there that we have to use that is given to us by the state, so that is the reason for it, but the tax rate is down this year from where it was last year. Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, I think it is always important to reiterate again to those at home and maybe new to the area, and maybe a little confused with how the tax rates work, that when we get our tax bill, all of us that live here in the district, that the amount we owe may be higher than last year, but that's because people continue to move to this excellent area and want the excellent education that we can provide. And so our house values go up, but we are adopting a lower rate than last year. So I think it bears that explaining again to those that are new.
Yes, ma'am, I agree. Okay, any other comments? All right, hearing none, all in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed. So 10B passes, taking us to 10C, consideration and possible action regarding an agreement for the purchase of attendance credits, option three agreement, and to the, and to delegate contractual authority to the superintendent. Dr. Ferguson, can you speak real quick on this?
So in the last four years, we've not been a recapture district, and so obviously, appreciate Ms. Sees and her team, we were two-point-five million, and now we're down to a million on that recapture, but what the state requires us to do is to put in our option for how will we pay this. So a couple options that sit out there, you can sell land that you may have available in a school district or property. Ours is really going to come from our student growth because we know what our demographer reports look like, so we will put that attendance credit in, which is option three to TEA.
Perfect, we can ask questions or have discussion on that in just a moment, but first I will ask for a motion.
I move that the board approve the agreement for the purchase of the attendance credit option three and delegate contractual authority to the superintendent related to the agreement as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. With Dr. Ferguson's explanation, anything further, question-wiser to discuss on this one? All right, hearing none, all in favor? That is all seven of us. 10C passes, taking us now to 10D, consideration and possible action regarding a slight boundary adjustment with Salina ISD in the Mustang Lakes development.
Appreciate the proactive move because right now, this area in Mustang Lakes, because part of that subdivision on the backside actually is zoned for Salina ISD, but the bulk majority of the homes are Prosper ISD. Right now, it's just land, so there's no students living in the home, which is when you want to take these actions and make these moves so that you can clean those lines up because we've had situations before where it's going through a bedroom or right the line, it's like, well, where does the kid go to school? And so working with Salina ISD to ensure that where those lines are, that they're clean, and that there'll be about five acres of land that will go to Salina ISD, and then we'll have a little over an acre, almost two acres of land that will come into Prosper ISD, but truly looking at what is a street and what is a clean divide in order to be able to work with our neighboring ISD.
Perfect, thank you, Dr. Ferguson. Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the small boundary adjustment with Salina ISD in the Mustang Lakes development as presented by our amazing administration.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Dr. Ferguson, a quick question on this one. This is all future land development and stuff like that, we're cleaning it up before it gets in there, so everybody knows what's coming.
Yes, I actually drove out there last week just to ensure that there were no homes, and it's truly just work, excavation work right now, trying to get water pipes laid and all of those things that have to happen, but no homes, there's no structure going up yet.
Perfect, we are out in front of this. I know Salina ISD, their board has already approved this, so we will do this and then make it official. Any other questions or discussion on it? All right, hearing none, all in favor? That is all seven of us. And so 10D passes, taking us to 10E, consideration and possible action regarding executing and contract approval and resolution to authorize Linebarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson LLP as special counsel to perform all legal services necessary to collect delinquent ad valorem property taxes. Is there a motion?
I move that the board execute the contract and approve the resolution to authorize Linebarger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson LLP as a special counsel to perform all legal services necessary to collect delinquent ad valorem property taxes as presented by administration.
All right, thank you, is there a second?
A second?
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Dixon. I botched the V-word in there, so, but I think we all know what it says, so we're good, and we're going to roll with it anyway.
It says taxes.
Okay, there we go. Any other discussion, questions on that?
There's Latin in the room that can tell us how to say velorem or valorum.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to botch it again. Yeah. Okay, all in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed, so 10E passes as well, taking us to 10F, consideration and possible action regarding the district improvement plan.
So this is the time of year, obviously, we've been working since the spring into early summer, our campuses as well as district really knowing down what are those goals and things that we will be going after to make improvements within our district. This all is born out of our strategic plan work, when we identified those back in 2019 of what are the big rocks, the things that we felt most near and dear to our heart that were most important for our students, and we certainly piggyback off of that work to create a nice through line and a lot of consistency within each of our campuses. Really proud of each of our administrators and the way that they've embraced this process, moving to a district plan on a page, department plans on a page, and then campus plans on a page. It makes it very easy and effective for them to be able to talk to their staff or to parents about what exactly it is that we're going after, and I know we have a board instructional walk coming up pretty soon in September, and that's one of the things that you'll see when we go out to campuses to visit, they will talk about their plans on a page, and then you can see how that aligns to the district as well. So excited about the work that is continuing forward and the progress that we can make.
Perfect. Is there a motion for 10F?
Sure. I move that the board approve the district improvement plan as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Linker. I know the plan on the page is one of the best things we've seen, it keeps, it helps us as we open new schools constantly around here. It's a huge help for the board to know what's going on. Any other discussion, questions, comments?
Yeah, I would add that, you know, for our community, this is online and available, right? So review it, see it for your campus. It is a wonderful document, especially for some non-educators, right, just to see what are the goals for our campuses, and to align it with our strategic vision, I think, is a really powerful thing, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, we will now vote, all in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed. 10F passes, 10G, we're going through the entire alphabet here, consideration and possible action regarding campus improvement plans.
I move that the board approve the campus improvement, improvement plans as presented by the administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Again, any other comments?
Just another comment saying the same thing, probably, in our way. For me, I, one of the highlights is the instructional walks that we do. For those that don't know, we go in and meet with the campus principal, they pull out their plan, talk to the board about their goals, and then we get to go into classrooms and see what the students are working on. It's really great for the board just to have that, that kind of view that, you know, we know what's going on, we know the cool things our kids are doing, but to be able to walk in and see it is, is a big highlight for me.
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Linker. Anything else? All right, hearing none, all in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed, 10G passes, 10H, consideration and possible action regarding additional employee payments resolution. Dr. Ferguson, will you give us a quick word on this one?
Yeah, just in the event that we look a little bit financially different in the future as we continue to work on the deficit, being able to give some flexibility as we consider trying to recruit and retain amazing educators, and so this is one of the ways that we're able to do that.
Perfect, thank you. Let's see here, is there a motion for 10H?
I got it. I move that the board approve the employee payments resolution as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Dial, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cavender. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, or, I'm sorry, all in favor? That is all seven of us, sorry.
They're all arguing over who got the.
Everybody's involved tonight. Okay, 10I, consideration and possible action regarding resolution for school closures due to weather and other emergencies.
You want me to speak?
Yes, ma'am, please.
So what we have experienced the last several winters is severe ice and storms that sometimes close us in for days on end, maybe sometimes not even having water or heat, maybe some of us have experienced that in the past. At that point in time, due to safety, we're not going to have our employees try to travel to work, but we still want to make sure that they're getting compensated, and so one way that we're able to do that is through this resolution in the event that we have unfortunate weather that causes them not to be able to come into work, but that the school district, you all are granting approval as the board to continue to pay our employees.
All right, thank you, Dr. Ferguson. May I have a motion for 10I?
I'll move that the board approve the resolution for school closures due to weather or other emergencies as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Dixon, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Any discussion or questions on this one?
Just really being proactive, we typically do this in the August board meeting because obviously you're not worried about ice. We would like some ice right now because it's so hot, but it's really just getting ready for those winter months.
That's right. Smart, thank you. Thank you. Okay, all in favor? That is all seven of us, none opposed, 10I passes. That now brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. Let's see here, let me read a quick part here. Based on the number of individuals that have signed up to speak for public comment this evening, each individual will be allotted three minutes. When each speaker gets to the podium, please tell us your name and whether you live in Prosper ISD boundaries. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, and other community members by name. Let's see here, I did the three minutes. Disruptions of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments of any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Your comments should be directed to the board, not members of the audience. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee decision or operational issue should present that complaint through the grievance process. Let's see here, our people this evening are, Ms. Pickle.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jamie Pickle, my address is Public Record, and I'm a Prosper ISD parent to a first grader and a fourth grader at Rucker Elementary. I'm here tonight requesting the board's help in a matter related to student safety at a bus stop. Earlier today, I emailed each of you with background information and videos proving, excuse me, that the current stop for bus 170D at Hidden Lake and First Street is incredibly dangerous to students and pedestrians. As many of your responses directed, I have tried to work, I've tried to work with the appropriate district employees in the Transportation Department, District Services Department, Prosper ISD Police Department, and the Deputy Superintendent, but have been unsuccessful in my attempts despite providing evidence of how dangerous the current stop is and suggesting potential solutions. I, along with other neighbors and parents, some of who are here tonight, have been left with no other choice to bring this concern to the board. Historically, the bus stop has come into the neighborhood with two designated stops, but this year, the bus stop was moved to First Street in a turn lane at the top of the hill to avoid turning around in our neighborhood. First Street's posted speed limit is forty-five miles per hour, most cars travel in excess of fifty-five miles per hour. It has a pedestrian, it has a history of pedestrian accidents, and just this last weekend, a car plowed into the three-way intersection less than half a mile from the bus stop, taking out a blinking stop sign and a large street sign. Most telling, and what I hope you hear tonight, is that in nine days of school, I and other parents have witnessed seven, seven cars run the bus's extended stop sign as students entered and exited the bus, and we provided those videos to the district. The district's latest response is that they will engage a third-party risk agency to assess the stop. What they find isn't going to change the reality of the current placement. People are running the bus stop sign. They don't see the bus coming over the hill, or they think the bus is turning into the neighborhood since stopping in a turn lane. My reasonable ask is that there be one stop within the neighborhood, as we've always had in the past, and this is a twenty-five-year-old-plus neighborhood here in Prosper, so students may board and exit safely. Adjustments have been made for one other stop this year in the district that I am aware of, and we do not understand why the district has not done the same for our children. Accidents will happen regardless of any risk assessment, and seven cars running the stop sign in nine days should be enough evidence that we are trending quickly towards an incident here. And I don't need to tell anyone here that a car going forty-five miles per hour and hitting a child would be catastrophic. I'm imploring all of you as parents to help make this right. Prosper ISD beliefs include students first in all decisions and providing a safe environment, that's what we've heard all night here. We don't need assessments, we need action. Please move the bus stop off First Street into our neighborhood so no one gets hurt immediately. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Roundtree.
Hello, thank you for having me up here today at the board. My name is Alan Roundtree, I am a member inside the Prosper ISD in the same neighborhood that Ms. Pickle lives in as well. To accompany my present and statements here today, I've emailed each of you and others with a full accounting of my concerns, questions, and potential solutions, as well as requests I will go over now. I welcome any deeper engagement from any of you at any time on these concerns. I'm here to request the ISD and Transportation Department conduct proactive, collaborative, and open communication to address the concerns I and others in my neighborhood have brought to your attention regarding the policy change to bus stops in neighborhoods which end in dead-end or cul-de-sacs. To date, I've sent seven emails with concerns, questions, comments, and evidence of the risk the new policy poses to students, and to date, I've received two email responses and a single phone call from district employees. And to date, I've received two email responses and a single phone call from district employees. This is not what I would expect from my representatives in government at any level, when presented with evidence that they have placed kids under new risk due to a policy change. Ultimately, it's my understanding this policy has been implemented due to new larger buses purchased recently, which means the ISD is content placing students under new risk in favor of optimization to handle growth in the ISD. I'm not content with this risk equation, not for my neighborhood nor any other. I have proposed multiple potential options to allow the new larger bus to enter my neighborhood and remove the risk of the new stop location. I've received zero engagement on any of these proposals. I've only received communication that no decision will be made until a hazard assessment is complete, which I am not being engaged to include for input. To determine, the determination to conduct a hazard assessment regarding my neighborhood and other associated bus stops is overall a great idea. My question is, why was this hazard assessment not conducted before the policy was implemented? Thus far, I'm not aware of any citizen directly engaged in that hazard assessment. Are we missing an opportunity here to get the full clear picture of the risk that we have placed our students under? Why are citizens, students, bus drivers not being engaged in that hazard assessment? An example would be that we are on day 10 today, and so far at the bus serving our neighborhood, we have seen at least seven vehicles run past the bus with stopping red, or flashing red lights and the stopping arms extended. I'll close by requesting the bus stop servicing my neighborhood be moved within the neighborhood and off of East First Street in order to keep my student and others safe from the new risks this policy change has placed them under before an incident occurs. Thank you very much for having me tonight.
Thank you. Let's see here, and then last we have Ms. Houghton.
My name is Shamika Horton, and I do live in Prosper ISD. This is a picture of my daughter. She is currently eligible for special education services, and she has been out of school for an entire year because Prosper ISD would rather invest and allocate funds to disagree with us in due process hearings instead of providing these educational services for my child. For an entire year, my daughter has asked, when am I going to school? Instead, sadly, I have to tell her that Prosper ISD chooses to allocate resources to pay attorneys billable hours instead of providing these special education services that she is entitled to by IDEA. So I'm asking this board, as committee, community elected officials, to intervene and do something about it. Do you know what is happening to our special education children who receive these services in your district? Why are our children being compelled to travel to centralized programs at other campuses and not serve at their home campus? There is a gifted and talented program at every Prosper ISD location at every level. Why can't we provide our special education students, the most vulnerable among us within this district, these services at the campus level? So I'm asking the board, requesting that as community elected officials, that you intervene and provide my daughter with the special education services that she deserves. Thank you.
Thank you for the comments. Okay, that takes us to report from the superintendent.
Okay, so Daniel Jones, several of you got to be on that visit with he and his great family and being able to really do the first look at the amazing facility that's been built. And this is a part of the work that we do is we connect with our community partners and then communication. So that certainly goes into goal four and really working on our culture. Kids, our students, love to know who the namesakes are when we can provide that to them. And then being able to have the support of the board, but also the naming committee to be able to make suggestions moving forward on ones that they want to see names on in the future. So we're very excited to have Daniel L. Jones, who was one of our former board members and board president for a very long time, and obviously a parent, but also still resides in the community. So we're glad to have his name on the side of one of our facilities. And then Prosper connects, I want to give a big shout out to Ms. Biggs and to Dr. Clark's team. Outstanding work. We had, gosh, over 2,000 participants who came to engage in that day. A lot of just invaluable training. Many of our new employees also came to engage with us during that learning as well, which is always great, and that was above and beyond what they needed to give of their time. Many of them stopped me in the hallway to say how excited they were to be in Prosper ISD and that they had learned so much during the day. So we're always excited to be able to have this. I also want to say a big thank you to Julie Brantley's team and also our communications team because there are a lot of people who are trying to pull all together and collaborate to make this day of learning possible for our educators. So an outstanding day, but know that there's a lot of hard work and months and months of work to get this pulled off for every single employee that wants to engage. So we're glad to see how many people came out, and that goes with our goal one, innovative learning, because we certainly want to support that and really promote that innovation within the classroom with each of our educators. And then convocation, certainly just an amazing opportunity to be able to bring our staff all together to really kick off the school year and get them excited about what is ahead. And what we love the most is when we have our students up performing and being able to show us their many talents, and they did definitely show out. And our staff had a great time. I want to say thank you to the Prosper Education Foundation for being able to contribute, to give back, so that we have this great event, and they work very hard behind the scenes to make sure that our staff is honored at a very high level, and certainly it doesn't hurt to win some prizes for staff members to have a little perk. So we're very proud of what happened with convocation, and again, Julie Brantley, her team with events, but then also Rachel Trotter with communications, making sure that these great moments happen and that they're memorable for our staff, because that's what we want.
Okay, we will now enter into closed session according to Texas Government Code, chapter 551, 071, 072, 074, and 076. Thank you all so much for coming.
We are back from executive session, and the time is 8:31. As discussed in closed session, it brings us to item 14A, consideration and possible action regarding hiring contract personnel. May I have a motion?
I move the board approve the hiring of contract personnel as presented by administration.
Thank you, Mr. Van Wolf. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Linker. Any discussion needed? All right, vote, all in favor? All right, very good. It's all six of us, and that takes us to the end. We, the meeting adjourned, and the time is 8:32. Thank you, and have a great evening.